Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Today is Monday, May 13, 2019. Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. Please stand and join me in the play. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
This time, I'd like to ask you to join me in a moment of silence as we think about an honor, Jose Agudelo, a custodian at White Plains High School for 10 years who retired last year, Pauline Farr, a reading teacher at Eastview for 14 years until retiring in 1986, and our student Haley Coulser, who was one of our students at White Plains, one of our students at Bosse's. Thank you. Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This evening, we have a very short presentation related to the proposed budget. Of course, the budget election is Tuesday. I should be actually quizzing you, right? Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 21st of May, polls open at 12:00 p.m. They close at 9:00 p.m. And today is our public hearing on the budget. There's been a great deal of work and a great deal of effort leading up to this evening and certainly leading up to the election on Tuesday. Today is an opportunity for anybody who may have some questions related to the proposed budget to ask those questions. I can tell you by looking out into the audience that many of you have actually heard the budget presentation on multiple occasions. We are very proud of this proposed budget. Once again, this is a budget that is 100% devoted to our students, remains within the tax cap, fiscally responsible, and also is directly connected to our strategic plan as well as our long-range plan. The budget, the levy itself, is 3.44%. It supports 100% of all of the programming that our children presently enjoy, including all of the extracurricular activities, the arts, and everything related to our program, while at the same time improving upon an already strong program by providing our children with more access to high-quality staff members as well as activities. Another component related to this year's ballot and the budget is that there are two propositions. The first proposition is asking the public to support the expenditure of $6.4 million for projects at Highlands and the high school. That $6.4 million would come from the Capital Reserve. The Capital Reserve, again, has been established years ago for just this purpose, to be able to provide the resources needed to attend to our capital needs without any increase in taxes. It's very important that I remind you that that expenditure that's being requested does not carry a tax increase. We'll be doing projects, like as I mentioned, at Highlands, which includes the courtyard, includes windows and lintels and repointing, as well as Parker Field. At the high school, we'll be looking to install a security vestibule. We will be changing out the electrical system, which is the original system from the 1960s. We'll also be increasing our capability for safety and security with our P.A. system as well as repairs to the pool and re-turfing Lauks Field, which while still lovely and beautiful, has come to the end of its useful life. So, again, that $6.4 million does not increase taxes and attends to those capital needs. And kudos to the Board of Education for establishing the reserve in the past for just this purpose. A perfect segue is that the second proposition is to create a second Capital Reserve or a new Capital Reserve, which will allow the Board of Education and allow the district to continue to, when possible, allocate funds to that reserve so that we can continue to maintain the capital expenses within the district without increasing taxes. Again, Capital Reserves are established by voter approval, and they're only expended with voter approval as well. So, three questions. Essentially, you have the first, which is the budget, again, within the tax cap, supporting all programming and attending to all of our children's needs. And we have the first proposition, which is the $6.4 million for Capital Reserve. And then the second proposition, which is the establishment of a new Capital Reserve that will last for 10 years and will be allowed $25 million.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Tuesday, the 21st, 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rick. Next, we'll have any announcements from any of the board members?
I have a couple of things, actually, five things. I'll be quick. A couple of weeks ago, GW had a PTA meeting where Dr. Rick presented the budget. Afterwards, the PTA honored me, and I want to thank them for that. We went to, they gave me Pax Romana gift certificate, really good pasta. A number of us were at Lauks on, over the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I've got my ears burned. It was a gorgeous day, almost 3,000 athletes from more than 11 states and at least three teams from Canada. We saw some records, some state records fall, meet records fall. It's an amazing event. Couple of weeks before, actually, last week or a week and a half ago, a couple of us were at the National Honor Society induction where I was the speaker. And a couple of days later, in the mail, I got an envelope. And so, back when I was a kid growing up in the 1960s, my dad turned me on to science and astronomy. We've always had a telescope and science fiction. He let me stay up on Tuesday nights to watch the original Star Trek. So, it was very meaningful when I opened it up and they got me a star. So, there is a star in the heavens named Charlie Norris, and it made me cry. And I, my dad's not alive anymore, so I drove to the cemetery and I talked to Dad about the star, and he was very quiet. He didn't say anything. A number of us went to pay our respects for Haley Coulser, the student that passed away who was at White Plains High School and at Bosse's. And I remember when she graduated, she was this small, physically challenged person, but she was really dynamic, and her parents spoke about her with so much love and how much she loved the district and loved the students and was really pursuing her passion. She had a wonderful life, but unfortunately, it was a short life. And lastly, a number of us continue to mentor at Rochambeau, where we help kids just have conversations about things. And it's really important to help kids have conversations, and it's more important to listen to them and not speak to them because then we sound like Charlie Brown, the wah-wah-wah. You need to listen to them because kids are barometers of our time. They're barometers of their time, I should say. And when you listen to them, you learn. So, Director Paul Bratcher's sitting over there, and I wanted to thank him for providing that opportunity to me to come in there and have conversations with kids. That's it.
Thank you. I'll just mention a few items as well. A few of us, Dr. Stein, myself, Ms. Lowich, and Ms. Brady, we were at the Women's Club luncheon together. We had a very nice time. As you know, the Women's Club awards scholarships to some of our students, so it's always very nice to see our community recognize our students, and we had a nice time, I think.
It was always great to see our administrators.
Yes, yes, absolutely. The other thing I'll mention, a few of us were also at the Eastview National Junior Honor Society induction.
Highlands.
Oh, at Highlands. The National Junior Honor Society induction at Highlands. I'm sorry, Mr. Spatafor. We were in your house, your house, your house, to see our children's academic achievements recognized. I, too, enjoyed some time at the Lauks Games. I wanted to mention, I did get to catch a couple of softball games. I did see a JV game, and I also got to see a couple of varsity games. And from what I understand, our varsity team has had a very strong season. They will be in the playoffs, and if I'm not mistaken, they're highly ranked.
And none of them are seniors.
And none of them are seniors. I don't know when exactly the playoffs start, but I do plan on being there and supporting our young team, and I'm just excited for what they'll do now as well as in the future. So, thank you.
We also had, we're lucky enough to have our youngest superintendent, Day, who made some very important decisions about the last school lunch for her school as well as the color of the playground. And she was actually a very poised little young lady.
I'll add a couple of things. So, I attended White Plains High School's Theater Unlimited performance. There were some very interesting, I'll say, short plays. There was an high school English teacher sitting behind me, and I sort of turned to him thinking maybe he'd be able to explain exactly what was going on, but he seemed just as intrigued as I was. But it was very interesting, I will say. We have some very talented students. I also was down at Columbia University Teachers College to attend New York School Board's Association-sponsored Equity and Opportunity for Every Student Conference. And it was very worthwhile to go to sessions on access and opportunity for all students to regress learning experiences, ensuring students are prepared for college career and active citizenship. And I look forward to being able to attend more during the summer as well, so.
Anybody else? Laura Cook?
Okay. Eko?
Yeah, I saw that on the further on agenda.
Oh, just, no, go ahead.
Yeah, so, on Earth Day, the county recognized White Plains Schools for our use of the electric buses, the five we have in use. So, it was a rainy Earth Day afternoon down at Kensco Dam, and they honored a few different individuals from Westchester County in their efforts to reduce, I think, our carbon footprint in a few areas, and we were doing a good job with our five buses. And lots of people have questions about, it's been picked up nationally about how we're doing this and how we can continue to get more buses on our fleet. So, that was a nice award we have, and I think you're gonna share it later, right?
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. As you can see, we get busier as the months go, and these last months are very, very busy, but we enjoy every minute of it. So, next, we'll move into public participation. The public is invited to address the board and superintendent on any matter relating to White Plains Public Schools. Please limit your statements to three minutes. Please also respect the privacy and dignity of all individuals, whether students, faculty, administrators, or others. The administration will be happy to address privately any school-related matters of a more personal nature. Do we have any public participation? Please come up to the podium and introduce yourself and your address. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Gold, and I live at 72 Hartstale Avenue here in White Plains. I am here tonight to speak with you about homework. I have two children at MAS who are in second and fifth grade, and they love going to school every day. But as a parent of a rising sixth grader, I've talked to other parents about homework, and I am concerned. The concern has motivated me to go to an Eastview PTA meeting to hear Dr. Rick speak about the district's vision for middle school. In response to parents' homework concerns, Dr. Rick, you had said kids need to be kids and homework shouldn't cause tears or loss of sleep. And while that was heartening to hear, I've talked to many parents of sixth graders, and unfortunately, the philosophy is not filtered down into the classrooms. I'm not the only concerned parent, as I'm sure you know, and a group of concerned parents came together to create a homework survey, and tonight, I'm going to be speaking on behalf of about 350 White Plains students. I'm here for the sixth-grade family that wrote, "Homework is consuming all my family's free time each evening and is driving a wedge between all of us." I'm here for the sixth-grade family who wrote, "Some nights, there's enough homework to take up more than four hours. The rigid rules about deadlines means kids stay up all night to get it done." I'm here for the seventh-grade family who just wrote, "Stress, lack of sleep, illness." The survey focused on quality of life and quantity of homework, not homework quality or educational value. It was not a rigorous scientific survey, but it gave a glimpse into what families are experiencing, and the open-ended comments were particularly interesting. The good news is families overall are supportive of kids having homework, and with the exception of the youngest students, assignments can be completed independently. Other results were more concerning. Even in grades 2 through, K through 2, over 20% of students are feeling a lot or a significant amount of anxiety from homework. This anxiety rises as students get older, and it peaks at 66% in Eastview, feeling significantly or a lot of stress or anxiety around homework. Also, in Eastview and Highlands, over 50% of students are losing some sleep due to homework. The quality of homework is also, the quantity of homework is also a problem. There's a guideline developed by Harris Cooper of about 10 minutes of homework per grade per night, not including reading, and in every single grade, the majority of parents responded that usually are always, there's more than the recommended amount. While there wasn't enough response to compare schools or grades or teams, reading the responses show how much the homework is inconsistent between different schools, the grades, or even the team within the same building. Very few families commented that they were working with schools to resolve their students' distress, and those that did had mixed results. And that is why I'm here, why several parents responded to the study. The district needs to convert Dr. Rick's positive rhetoric into an actionable policy. We are asking you, the Board of Education and the district, to take a formal and holistic look at homework and create clear and explicit policy that meets the needs of all stakeholders, especially the students. Thank you for your time. I have a survey of the results, including all of the responses that I can leave behind.
Thank you very much. Will there be any other?
Can I just, real quick? Thank you, thank you very much. I just, if you could email me whatever data that you've collected, that would be really helpful. And I couldn't have asked for a better segue, I don't think. We're actually planning on having a conversation district-wide about homework and more policies next year as well. Yeah, thanks.
Next is award. Are you presenting the award?
Yeah, was it ready?
Oh.
No other comments?
No. Nope. There's no other public participation. Am I correct?
All right.
Or maybe Annie. Is that public?
Well, again, thank you all for coming this evening. I know there are many of our faculty, staff members here as well. Thank you, and thanks to our students who are here also. Really appreciate you coming out. I do have a few awards that I just want to make mention of before we move into the superintendent's report in our presentations. The first is subject A, is the Westchester ECO Award, which Dr. Otizia just recognized the district has received, and we're really appreciative of County Executive Latimer and the recognition there, and we'll be looking to continue to reduce our carbon footprint moving forward. We also have an award to White Plains High School, which is a certificate of achievement awarded to the high school for contributions to environmental science and technology. So, congratulations to our faculty, staff, and students at the high school as well. And then we have an award to Church Street. Church Street was recognized for the second year in a row, which I think, once you're recognized two years in a row, you're out. I don't think they can even apply, again, to be a promising practice school by the Character Education Partnership. And this promising practice, which I know some of the trustees have actually seen firsthand, is the Reading Buddies Program that allows students of varying needs to work together, to support each other, and to also improve their literacy and social skills. It really is a phenomenal program, so congratulations to Church Street. I should also mention that the, and our friends from Highlands are here, Highlands has been designated by the Anti-Defamation League as a No Place for Hate School this year, so congratulations, Mr. Spatafor. And certainly not to be outdone by Highlands, Principal Doherty and the team at the high school were also designated as a No Place for Hate by the Anti-Defamation League, so congratulations as well. And now, I would like to welcome Pilar to give us, I guess, what's gonna be, we're getting close, Pilar, you're almost...
I know, two months and a half.
Wow.
It's exciting but scary. Hi, everyone. Happy Monday. As Dr. Eller said, it is a crazy time in the school year. You would think that as the year is winding down, everyone would be more relaxed, excited for summer, but that's not the case in White Plains. We're always busy doing something. So, I have a pretty long list tonight of stuff that we've been up to, which is really, really cool. In the music department, there was the Citywide Orchestra Festival on April 10th, which I heard was really lovely. The final White Plains High School Symphonic Band concert was on May 2nd, and yes, there were a lot of tears involved. Our mariachi group, Mariachi Juvenil Los Tigres, at White Plains High School has been very, very active recently, which is super exciting. They performed at the Emlyn Theater, which is in Mamaroneck, on April 26th, and they also were invited to perform at Manhattanville College for a Cinco de Mayo celebration on May 1st. And watch out in the next coming weeks for the White Plains High School Symphonic Orchestra Concert. It'll be their last concert as well. In terms of academics, Dr. Eller and Mr. Norris touched upon it a little bit. The White Plains High School National Honor Society induction ceremony took place on April 11th, you know, celebrating students who are dedicated to community service, maintaining high GPAs, et cetera. And there was a very similar kind of sister organization for the middle school, the National Junior Honor Society Ceremony on April 24th at Highlands. During spring break in April, some students at the high school, a group of about 16 students, got to take a trip to Costa Rica, myself included. It was really, really wonderful, and it was a full cultural immersion trip with homestays, language classes, dance classes, community service, a bunch of really, really great stuff. It was a really great opportunity that we're really lucky to have here. And last but not least, the Lauks Games took place this past weekend, really exciting. A bunch of students from White Plains High School competed, the marching band was there. It was a lot of fun. So, yeah, thank you.
(applause)
Just a couple of quick announcements before we move into our presentations. Just a reminder, White Plains Hospital is running their annual, and many members of our community are participating in the Exceptional Challenge, the Community Walking Challenge that is starting up. I know, Mrs. Schoenfeld, if you have any questions, you can certainly reach out to Michelle, and she can direct you to the folks at White Plains Hospital. We're also really looking forward to continuing our partnership with the hospital related to Stop the Lead Program. We've had a number of faculty and staff members who have been trained. We're working with the hospital to bring more training to more members of our community, so that's, again, forthcoming and really great. I, too, want to congratulate everybody who participated in the Lauks Game this past weekend. And again, Mr. Stefanelle, congratulations on winning your award. Absolutely wonderful. Thank you, Frank. (applause) I had the opportunity to meet Mrs. Stefanelle and thank her for allowing all the hours that Frank spends with us all the time. So, again, congratulations, Frank, very well deserved.
And his lovely daughter.
And his lovely daughter as well. Teacher Appreciation Week was last week, but the reality is, we appreciate our teachers every day. So, thank you all very much, those of you who are in the room. As well as Nurses Day, and if you've ever had an upset stomach or a scraped knee, you know how, you know how important nurses are, but the reality is, they're way more important than just that. They are integral members of the school community, and while a lot of us think back to, you know, upset tummies, it's really the nurses who are the prime mover in terms of health and wellness within our schools. It's a tremendous responsibility, it's a tremendous job, and we have tremendous nurses. So, thank you very much to all of our nurses. And I also want to thank the PTA Council for supporting the Walk to Bike to School Day. It was nice, it didn't rain, which was wonderful, and we had a lot of students participate. I have to give a big congratulations to GW, huge turnout at GW, and they really do a nice job as well. So, thanks to everybody who participated, and congratulations to all. And of course, Happy Mother's Day to all of our White Plains moms. Hope you had a great day yesterday, even though it was a little rainy. Okay, this evening, we're really happy to welcome two presenters, two groups of presenters. And I think the first, well, it looks like we're gonna, we're gonna welcome Mr. Spatafor first, and we're gonna talk about Earth Science for All. Welcome, Mr. Spatafor.
Good evening. So, we're all here to talk about a number of initiatives at Highlands this year. We're gonna begin with Earth Science for All, and so, I'm not sure where the remote is.
(inaudible).
Which one? Oh, thank you. I didn't even say it, thank you. Okay, so, this is the first year where we have not split our eighth-grade class into two groups, which is 50% taking Earth Science and 50% taking Science or AI, okay, which is New York State Grade Eight Science. We've done this for a number of reasons, the main one being inclusion. And so, Dr. Doty and I are gonna talk about this a little bit. So, one of our core beliefs in this district is that we, that high expectations promote high achievement for everyone. And in order to do that, we need to challenge all students. So, we've presented Earth Science, which is a Regents-level class, to our entire eighth grade. So, in addition to just challenging each student and being good and inclusive for each of those students, it also increases the opportunities for science electives and advanced placement classes in high school. We also want to offer the most rigorous and engaging curriculum to each student because that's, we want to be an inclusive district. And we also want to reflect our district demographics in all of our classes. So, Dr. Doty, you want to add anything to?
No, I would just add that one of our, one of our main reasons for moving to this is the range of opportunities students will be able to have in high school. If they, there's a requirement of three years of science, and if they've completed one early, they can move on to electives that are fun and engaging and challenging, and it is often the science electives that set transcripts apart for college. And so, we're providing them many more opportunities to do that if they complete our science.
More exposure to the children early on in Earth Science because Earth Science was a very different curriculum than what they were used to. Life science, certainly, everybody saw from kindergarten up, so we're trying to do that earlier on, so it's not a shock.
Yeah, there've been modifications to our seventh-grade curriculum to get ready for this, and they continue. So, one thing that I wanted to underline, which Dr. Doty just said, was, in the past, we had 50% of our eighth-grade class, but we had predetermined pretty much how far they could go in high school science, okay? And that just didn't sit well with us. So, you, oh, I'm sorry.
I know there have been supports in place for students, you know, taking Earth Science where you know there or perceive there's a need. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, yes. So, I'm actually gonna skip to that slide, okay?
Don't let this show you off.
All right. Okay. So, I'll go back. So, it's great that we have an entire eighth grade that shares this experience of this rigorous curriculum. And I guess one indication that it's kind of permeated our eighth-grade culture is it was made fun of at the eighth grade, at the talent show. Some kids were chased around with an Earth Science reference table. So, again, it's a, it's a common language, there are common goals, kids talk about preparing for the Regents exam. They're not different conversations in different rooms and in different classrooms. So, just some photos of our Earth Science students, and in fact, we have a video of one of our teachers, actually, all of the teachers. Do this, okay? So, all of our teachers asked their students to work collaboratively, produce a weather report. So, they looked at weather variables on a weather map and then produced, and this is just the beginning of it, so.
(inaudible) welcome back to the SCD Weather Station, sponsored by Rice's chocolate. Today, we focus on the weather in the sunny paradise of the off-coast island. Presenting the temperatures at a high of 81 degrees Fahrenheit, a bit lower than normal for the coming down in the west. Okay. Luckily, the rain swells is stopped soon, but right now, it's a decent part of the cloud. We're going to cover this 50% of the western south is pretty soft rain in the clouds. The slight rain decreasing in the morning, declining at night. Right now, the pressure is at 1011, 50 milli.
So, it continued, but we didn't want to go on to it. So, there were some challenges in staffing and scheduling this, because our AI classes met once a day. Our Earth Science classes meet one and a half times, so there's a double period every other day. So, it was, you know, more staffing, and it also provided some constraints to our schedule. So, Mr. Brown is our scheduler, so he's gonna talk about how we dealt with those.
So, as we moved away from Science Eight, we needed to add a lab to each of our students' day, and what that meant for staffing was that we had to disconnect the labs from the Earth Science classes. So, what that means is a coordination between teachers now between those two classes. Also, the labs themselves can't be contiguous because of the schedule itself. So, that's added a little bit of change to what we do think, how we manage things, and that's resulted in teachers having to have... And that's resulted in teachers having to have some common planning time, which we've built into the schedule for them. So they meet during the day to discuss, and the two teachers are able to come together to coordinate the curriculum and the classes. The other impact on the schedule is the encore classes, because we need to, for some students who have AIS, we have to drop something out of their day. So for some students, they may lose art or tech based on their schedule. So there is an impact for some students as a result of that.
One thing, we've been trying to keep an eye on the data, not too surprisingly this year. And when we analyzed the Common Assessment results from the separated lab and lecture, honestly, I thought it was going to make things worse, but it was actually a positive thing. It seems like the separation gave kids a little processing time in between the classes. And so, actually, some of the classes with separated lab and class did better on the assessments. You know, I don't know if there's another factor in there too, but it was nice to see.
So, and we'll start talking about responses. Common Assessments showed that some students struggled, which is not a surprise, because this is a level, this is a level of study that they haven't been exposed to yet. So it's a level of rigor that they weren't exposed to, as you mentioned. So in order to address that, we have Homework Center in our building on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. The teachers offer extra help at lunch, but what we put in place was an after-school support class that was an actual scheduled class. So students who are recognized on the Common Assessment System needing, as needing support, were registered for a class that met tenth period every other day. So, and it was a mandatory class where attendance was taken, okay? They could test out of it. And so if they, if they took a comprehensive test and they scored seventy-five or above, they could test out. So, a few kids have tested out, and some of those have opted to stay in the class, because they saw their grades improving. We also needed to support kids for labs. Regents, in a lab Regents class, there's a twelve-hundred-minute requirement for labs that kids have to put in seat time in labs, but they have to prove that they've done that by writing lab reports. So they were in the lab, but they were missing lab reports. So we had this extended day on Thursdays, when we get enough kids that we see that's a need, and we have them complete their lab reports, because we want them to be able to sit for the Regents. We also, and historically, we've done this, we have review sessions after school and on two Saturdays. We have two four-hour sessions on Saturdays that we do Regents review. So those are the supports that are in place.
Is it every month, or are we doing it just for June?
We just do the two weeks before the Regents exam. We used to do one Saturday before the ILS exam, and then one before the Regents, but now we don't have an ILS exam for those students, so we're just gonna do the two Regents. And this is how we're gonna tweak our supports next year, okay? We're basically gonna offer the same supports, but we're gonna start them earlier. Our tenth graded, our tenth-period graded class, we just need to start it early. We started in the second marking.
We started in the second semester.
Second semester, third marking.
And we're hoping to start it in the middle of the first marking period.
So, and the same thing with the lab extended day support, we just need to start it earlier. And then, some summer curriculum work.
So, we have two big projects from eighth grade and summer curriculum. One is making a unified lab curriculum. And most of the teachers, most of the eighth-grade teachers are gonna be part of that. And they're gonna be making a lab curriculum with at least two labs for every major topic, and everyone is agreeing to do one of those two labs. And they can do a second for an extension if they choose to. And then the other summer curriculum work is on Tier Two Process Words Vocabulary Support for students who struggle, not just with the Earth Science language, which of course, the teachers teach everyone, but with some of the underlying words, compare and contrast, what does it mean to be more abundant, things like that.
So, did you say a lab curriculum?
So the state has some requirements as far as labs are concerned?
They don't have specific labs, the way they do in biology, they do. But for Earth Science, it's not specific labs, it's just twelve-hundred-minute minimum to support the curriculum.
And then that last bullet, we want to make sure that, that all of our students achieve as well as they could, as highly as they could. So, we want to really analyze our data and make sure that we're getting the same number of students at mastery level as we have in the past. So, we plan to take a real careful look at that.
What's the level for mastery level?
Eighty-five and above.
Eighty-five and above. So you'll look at the longitudinal work over the last dozen years, I guess, and then match it up to your current group?
Yeah. And we also have, we also have the data that we use to place those kids as well.
Right. So then you could kind of match up the similar cohort over the last dozen years and match it up to the current year to see if there's an impact, one, hopefully a positive impact.
Right.
As you look at the students working through this, doing this work, if they fall, if they find out that they're not quite successful on the Regents, what could they expect? Would it be summer work? Would it be something that they would carry forward into their freshman year? What's the thought in there?
So, the state requirement for transferring the credit to the high school is to pass both the class and the Regents exam before they enter the high school, or the high school cannot accept it as transfer credit. If a student does not do that, this is a safety net, it is wiped from their record. They, there's no record of them having taken the course, it's not on their high school transcript. So if a student isn't successful in June, they have the opportunity to repeat the course in summer school and take the Regents in August. If they choose not to, or they are still not successful, there's no record of them having taken it.
And they don't need to take it to high school?
Right. They don't have to, although if, if they want an advanced Regents diploma, it's likely to. But no, usually, there's only one required Regents exam for graduation, yes.
So for Earth Science, this would be something new, I guess, if you had rising eighth graders in your high school summer school, something just a different look?
We've always had a few, but we anticipate a few more.
Right. For algebra, I guess, you would have some.
No, we had them, even occasionally, there would be students unsuccessful, not, not that many before, because we were only taking the top part of the class, but.
Has there been any consideration into any type of work for students, rising seventh graders into eighth grade as kind of a prep to get them set for the upcoming year, to think about vocabulary and, and kind of, I don't know, fill the tank, you know, fuel the tank a little bit at the beginning of the year?
We've talked about that in department meetings, to what the seventh grade and the sixth grade teachers can do to prepare students for the concepts and the skills that they need to be successful in Earth Science.
Right. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a nice opportunity for children who could have to do that, I think. As a district, it's nice that we have the resources to do this. I mean, if you look at it, it's a lot of safety nets, the after-school, the labs, the summer school, if you need it, the Saturday supports, it's quite significant.
And I hope that some point in the not-too-distant future, we'll start looking at Algebra for All, right, in eighth grade as well, so.
Yeah. I did have one other, one last item, though, and it, it's a tough subject for kids, and whether in the eighth grade or ninth grade, the children all mature at different times, and they click at different times. And I worry sometimes, because we hear a lot about the social, emotional worries, needs of the children, and making sure that we set them up to succeed. And I worry if, if we're putting a subject in front of a child that perhaps is more that they can, more that they can comprehend at one time, I don't want to, I guess the worrisome part is that we don't set them up to put them in a negative situation where they, where they look back on themselves and they reflect negatively upon themselves. So it's a concern there, I think, and it's, we want to set our children up to succeed. And I think that's, it'd be interesting to hear your thoughts on it, and looking back on after the first year of going through this, what, what your thoughts are on it, and if you had any observations with students where you may have seen that or perhaps didn't see that.
If I can just comment, I mean, the research seems to show that even for kids who do not necessarily do as well as one might hope in these courses, the exposure to really rigorous curriculum and having the opportunity to be able to study at that level is in fact beneficial to them, so.
And that's the balance that we really need to be aware of, right? We want to expose kids to rigorous curriculum and provide the supports to help them succeed. And even if they don't succeed at a level we want them to, as you said, the research indicates that that experience is a good one and a lasting one.
Yeah, and I think it'll spur, you know, I think they will be self-motivated to really want this in their pocket and want to take advanced. I mean, I really think that we'll have more students with advanced diplomas, you know, taking this challenge, and even going to summer school to ensure, because there's something that goes with this that really prepares them for the rigor of, you know, AP and college, so. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Earth Science I found to be exciting, because I wasn't lucky enough to take it. It wasn't taught a lifetime ago when I was in school, even as a scientist. So when my kids took Earth Science, I got to take it with them and learned a lot. I mean, I did not, had not heard about tectonic plates and half of the things that went on with weather, and I thought the course was amazing.
Yeah.
So, on to Highlands' next initiative, which was our one-to-one iPad initiative this year, which was led by Ms. Cadet, Valerie Cadet, and Mike Eaton. So Valerie is gonna present her work. It's really important to note, Avid is gonna present later, that Avid, the fact that we've had Avid in our building for a number of years has really made all of these initiatives much easier and laid the groundwork, because in every case, we're trying to make students more responsible for their own learning. And Avid has helped us across the board with that. So the one-to-one implementation, our current seventh grade came from Eastview last year with iPads. So it was the adults in the building who had to rise to the challenge in this case.
So I'm here to talk a little bit about that challenge and us rising to it. I mean, similar to Earth Science, we encouraged our staff and our faculty to take a risk, and we provided them with a high level of support in taking that risk. So that's what we're gonna talk about a little bit with the one-to-one initiative this year in its implementation phase. So over the summer for our admin retreat, our, the administrative team challenged us to come up with a theory of action to kind of move our work forward. And knowing that we had the one-to-one initiative implementation on the horizon, this was ours. If we provide teachers with the hardware and aligned professional development needed to improve student engagement, then they will design and create relevant, rigorous, and differentiated tasks. So if you look at the two images, a lot of times when folks think about one-to-one, they just think about getting devices in the hands of kids, right? They have an iPad, now I have to use this iPad. But we really tried to flip it and make sure that we keep instruction first. So, one of our guidebooks and that I had found at the ISTI Conference last year was Tasks Before Apps, really being thoughtful about designing rigorous learning in a tech-rich classroom. So we made sure that the learning and the instruction was primary, and we looked at how the technology could help to support that, to make it more engaging. And that really supported our next two theories of action, which really looks to shift the cognitive demands from teachers to students. And if we've shifted those cognitive demands from teachers to students, we'll have more engaged learners, and students will be empowered to better themselves in the world. So, this is a two-pronged approach. We had to focus on professional development first. Many of our staff members were not exposed to how to learn, you know, how to not just learn on an iPad, but teach using an iPad, particularly our veteran staff. We had, our younger teachers were coming in with skills that our older teachers just didn't understand. So we really scaffolded professional development. We started last year when each staff member was handed an iPad before the children came, and we really used an each-one-teach-one approach. So we had some expertise in the building. We had our teachers who considered themselves experts in an app or in an iPad sign up to hold an Appy Hour, Appy Hour. So we hold, we held those each Thursday. And, you know, if I'm an expert in iMovie, for example, I'll say my Appy Hour is this Thursday, staff members could sign up to join and attend the Appy Hour. And it was just these informal learning sessions among faculty. From that, we birthed our one-to-one implementation team, which was really our early adapters in the building. We also partnered with the Staff Development Office and our Tech Department. That team meets monthly, not only to plan our faculty meetings, our larger professional development offerings and everything else. We look to offer PD flexibility. We know that teachers need a lot of time to learn, just like students need time to learn something new. We had to respect that this would take time for the teachers to take on. So between NearPod sessions that took place during the day, or we ran an interest survey for what our faculty would like to know more about, and we offered those in individual sessions, or they could have had all three of the sessions as a larger course offering for, for credit. Our focus instructionally was on the three Cs. So again, we're always looking to promote student engagement. In our faculty meetings, we had two months where we just looked on, looked at apps and technology resources that promoted student creativity. Another two months where we just looked to spark authentic student curiosity. And the last two months, we've been focused on student, like more authentic student collaboration. And if you look, it's kind of hard to see, but this is the design for all of the faculty meetings at Highlands on your right-hand side, as opposed to just kind of the chalk and talk. We decided as administrators, we needed to model what we're expecting our faculty to do. So all of our faculty meetings have been on the SchoolAGI platform for this year, which is our learning management system that our teachers, many of our teachers use with our students. And our faculty meetings follow a Lattic style activity list. So kind of the whole group sessions that faculty used to were the first maybe fifteen minutes, and then they moved into for one-to-one implementation, real workshops, there was a brief introduction, but then they would have choice. So this faculty meeting, we were looking at curiosity. There was a session on interest surveys and how to develop interest surveys for students. There was another session on how to offer student choice even within the classroom. And the last session was on differentiation. Staff got to choose between those three. And, you know, these are other examples of how we redesigned our faculty meetings, offering choice and differentiation. We modeled collaborating remotely. I had the opportunity to be in Orlando, but I got to Skype into our faculty meeting to model a collaboration remotely. We had a digital Wonder Wall where the faculty could write out questions and wonderings they still had about using iPads with students, and we were able to respond to them, you know, more meaningfully and thoughtfully. And even just the small idea of practicing social media skills. So posting, you know, on a discussion board and responding to one another, you know, we made our faculty meetings a space where the faculty could practice that with one another before they had the students using that in their classrooms. So the last slide just talks about how we energize the student task with technology. So these are some examples of creativity. In Ms. Cristiano's class, it was a reading class, she collaborated, the students collaborated using SchoolAGI Discussion on their Culture of Origin and Family Recipes. Then the students used either Pic collage or Canva to design individual recipe pages for a dish outside of their culture. So they collaborated, you know, using the discussion feature about their own culture, but then they were responsible for coming up with a recipe, a small description of the other culture, and the directions, and they put it all together in a pretty professional-looking family recipe book. You know, gone are the days of, you know, going to CVS and getting the glue stick and the poster board. They're really designing some amazing things, this was just one example. For curiosity, we had two examples. This top one is from Ms. Sawyer's E&amp;L class, so our students who are coming into White Plains without any English. They can use their iPads as opposed to kind of looking lost. Here you see a student, you know, here's the due now and kind of the task, and the student has her iPad up using Google Translate to translate the text into her own language, into her native language. So that's just one way where students aren't left waiting for one teacher or one person to answer. They're kind of empowered to get the answers for themselves or to better understand. And down here for curiosity, in Ms. Avendaño's Social Studies class, instead of a typical social studies lecture, the students were learning about the Cold War through some self-selected Brain Pop videos, and then they had to demonstrate their understanding in a study guide. So each kid here had on headphones, they were watching their own videos and showing what they had learned about the Cold War in a study guide. You see, yes, there is still paper. You know, the teachers have to use whatever makes sense for them. So in most classrooms, you see a blend of the technology and the paper. And then this last example, we actually have a video. This is Mr. Steckler's computer. Um, this is Mr. Steckler's computer app life class. And students are collaborating across the sections to build a claw bot. So this is kind of the file, the, the final product. But they're not just working on that in one class and one team. Teams of kids from period to period pick up from what the last period had done to create the design process. So they each have a specific role each period. And then in the final minutes of class, they have to leave a video and notes in their collaborative notebook for the next section, so they can pick up where they left off. So this is just a small, uh...
So we are currently working on step six because the last group did it wrong. Um, is this step nine? Maybe we're wrong with step nine.
Time to do it. And do step nine, so I've done it.
Maybe check off, check over step nine. Uh, yeah, that's basically it.
So their nar- notebooks are a little bit more articulate. But they're clearly making sure that the students who come after them know this is what we're working on. Check over step nine. Step six may have been messed up, but now we're on step nine. And it's just a small example of how we're encouraging students to collaborate with one another, even outside of the classroom. And I think that's it.
Cool.
No, that's right.
So we also did a lot around social-emotional learning this year and teaming. We went from four seventh-grade teams to five seventh-grade teams. The five teams will now continue into the eighth grade, so we'll have five, five teams in both the seventh and the eighth grade. And we think, as you can see from these three statements, you know, we think social-emotional learning and teaming, which is an integral part of that, is really important to our students. Okay? And these are all supported by the developmental designs and a philosophy that we, you know, embedded in the school. All right, and continue to try and embed in the school over the last few years. So, um, so some things that, that are benefits of having five teams per grade. Okay, it provides an organization, an organizational structure that supports positive peer and student-teacher relationships. So we have groups of students of about a hundred and ten who have four, their four core classes together, basically. So in a school of over eleven, well, next year our, our student population is going to be about eleven forty in the seventh and eighth grade. So it's really important that, you know, we reduce that size and give kids a more personal interaction with each other and with staff members, as the next one says. Um, increase our academic, social and individual support from a wider number of adults who know each student. And reduce core class size and expand opportunities for advanced classes. So with five classes, with five sections of each and five teams, we can now have two advanced sections per team. So, you know, we, we talked about algebra for all, but we've moved towards forty percent. Next year we'll be really moving towards forty percent because forty percent of our sections can potentially be algebra. So we're kind of moving this, yeah.
She would never mention, but upper right-hand corners, Michelle Schoenfeld's grandson at the Liberty Bell, that's Matthew.
Yeah, that was the trip to Philly. And Mike should talk about that a little bit because that was pretty cool.
So that was a really great experience. Good evening, everybody. Um, we went to Liberty Bell and they actually brought Matthew up to the Liberty Bell and let him touch the Liberty Bell. So it was, it was a really cool experience and he really got a lot from it and it was a great trip. So that was a picture that we put on to make sure that we all got to see what we all get to do. Um, so this year, we, as doing developmental designs, we needed an advisory. And our schedule doesn't lend to really having an advisory period. So we had to kind of get creative of how we can do social-emotional learning inside the classroom by not having an advisory. So what we did is we took one time a week, we use eighteen minutes a week, and we went what's called the circle of power and respect. And during the circle of power and respect, we work on different, uh, skills. So we have a greeting, a share, an activity and a daily news. So kids learn how to greet one another every time they come into a classroom. Once a week, they're learning a different way of greeting each other. They then have a share, so they might have a topic share of something that's going on in the world. And they get to share out about their feelings on it. So I've already heard tonight from Mr. Ricky and Mr. Norris how important it was for students to be able to talk and we'd be able to listen to them. So this was a time where we could have this share and get to talk to our students, not so much always about academic topics, and also listen to students and see how they're really feeling.
Same class, is it?
No, so each quarter it's rotated. So I believe, uh, quarter one was period two, then went three, eight, nine. So it got rotated around. Um, and we took basically two minutes from each class that day. And that's how we came up with the eighteen minutes. Um, and then it ends with an activity, which the kids always love. Usually it's like a game or a communication game where they get to play with each other and, and do things. Um, and then the daily news is basically what we want to have a goal for the week. So we try to do this the first M-day of the week. So it's either a Monday or a Tuesday to try to have a goal of what we're going to talk about this week and what we want to succeed in this week. So that, those are the four steps of a circle of power and respect. And so far it's been very successful, I believe. Um, we've been looking at our numbers and it seems that it's, what we were targeting is really happening. Less kids moving, uh, being removed from classes and other, uh, areas of behavior seems to be going down.
And how to facilitate these? Are there counselors that come in?
Yeah, so it's both. So they were, we went through at least four or five in the beginning of the year to show them how to do it. I make a PowerPoint each week and I send it out to the teachers of what they had to do. And I give them time to come over to me if they have any questions of how to facilitate it. Um, it's really not that difficult, but I think as the years go on, along, they become more comfortable with it. Um, and the kids have become more comfortable with it as well. Um, it would be great if they could be in one class for the year to really build that community, but our schedule doesn't lend to that. But it, it still works because you're getting four classes and building four different communities for those kids. Um, so this is just the four components of it again. The greetings to learn name, practice ways of courtesy, sharing, getting to one, to know one another. The activities to kind of have fun and end on a good note. We want them walking out of the classroom having a good time. And then daily news is just to kind of have a goal for the week.
And does this activity, um, give the teacher who's facilitating it, an option to see that, that child who might be the outlier, who might need a referral to our social services or get some more help with that?
So that would probably come more during the sharing because during the sharing, they're getting to use some of their experience. And that's when we're trying to pick up on kids that are coming in from the weekend. So we found that during Mondays and Tuesdays in the beginning of the week seemed to be our biggest behavioral problems. Kids, uh, kids are coming in emotionally drained. So it gives our teachers time to kind of pick up on those signals that they might see and refer them to our PPS staff as well. Um, other things that we've done this year in our school has been great. So we, we created mindfulness, uh, with, with different groups through our PPS staff. We have mindful Mondays, which is during, uh, lunchtime. We have a classroom set aside with our PPS staff where they can go and do some mindfulness activities if they want to. Um, DBT groups, um, which is basically trying to get students to get rid of the negative thoughts and replace them with positive thoughts. So we have DBT groups that are meeting once a cycle with our, um, PPS staff to kind of train them of how to get rid of those bad thoughts and replace them with more positive thoughts.
This is the dialectical?
Dialectical behavior therapy, yes. Um, the SPAR club, students promoting acts of, um, respect and kindness, okay? And one, one thing that we did for that was really good is that every student, when they came in one morning, had to post it on their locker saying something really positive about them. They don't know who put it there. It was just there for them when they got there. So students are coming in with baggage. It was a way just to open up and how to say, you're going to have a great day today. You are special. And it really went well for them.
Now that you mentioned lockers, um, I have heard at other schools where on birthdays in middle school and high school, kids start decorating other student lockers, um, sometimes to the detriment of students who are not so popular. Is that something that we have experienced and how are we handling it?
We haven't experienced that much. The only, I, I would say the only time I see maybe a decoration and it's, it's far in between it from maybe like a birthday, like a happy birthday. But we try not to have this...
But not extreme where so popular kids are?
It's not extreme. No, it's really not extreme. And that's why SPAR club did what they were doing, to try to make sure everyone had a message on their locker. Um, so we're going to continue to do that. And maybe we need to do it more often, so everybody's feeling that message more often. Um, as Dr. Rick had mentioned before, we're no hate, uh, no place for hate. Uh, we did a mix-it-up day, which, uh, kids came into our cafeteria. Instead of sitting with who they usually sit with, we gave them a color and they had to sit by color at a table. And they got to sit and mix it up with different people that they never spoke to before. So that really worked out well. We have Poppy, our therapy dog, which is always in the morning greeting our kids as they come in. And again, it puts smiles on kids' faces as they walk in to see the dog. So it's really good to have Poppy in our building. Um, the trauma-sensitive committee, um, was given by the McKinley Grant. Um, and what it did is it kind of targeted our homeless population and tried to, uh, give them a place to feel safe. We also had a, a closet of food and clothes that we could give them if they needed it. Um, honor roll students, so we have honor roll assembly every marking period. Honor roll are students that are on a roll. So they have made three, uh, grade improvements, one full letter grade in three classes and have not received an F. And they're meant, they're recognized at our honor roll assembly. So it, it, it's been a real success, um, and we're going to continue to do that. And then our last one was wellness day slash night. So wellness day, we had two speakers come in, uh, talk about drug awareness and also another speaker that talked about self, uh, self-esteem. Um, and then we had breakout classrooms after where we allowed the kids to kind of talk about what they learned. And then we switched to eighth grade and seventh grade, so they both got to see both speakers. That night, we brought in the parents and their kids and we had babysitters. We had the two speakers come back to speak to the parents. We had Zumba, we had a raffle, pizza, dinner for everybody, and it, it was a tremendous success. So we had over a hundred people attend that night, um, and it was great. It was our first time that we did the wellness night. And we really want to try to make it an annual night because I just think the more we do it, the more people will get out to do it. So we've done a real, real lot of good work this year in the social-emotional learning and we're hoping to see the positive effects from it. And that's where we are with Highlands. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Spatafor. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Kronk. He's here. And Mr. Kronk, can you speak a bit about Avid? And I know we have some students here, uh, as well. And I do want to recognize Post Road is here with us this evening, as well as, um, the high school and MAS. Thank you for coming. So Shamo. Ridgeway. I think everybody's here tonight.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm, I'm Doug Kronk. I'm the English coordinator for grade seven through twelve and I'm also the Avid district director, a role that Mr. Spatafor held before he became the Highlands principal. Um, and I, and I'm really glad that this presentation is, is a part of the, the Highlands presentation because, um, the, the staff there really has done an incredible job. Uh, and their work is really why we're, uh, and I'm confident we will be recognized as a national demonstration school next year, um, from Avid. Uh, so I'm really here to give you a brief update about what's happening six-twelve. Um, and then to have some, uh, commentary from a couple of our students and a teacher to talk about what Avid is, is like for them in, in their lives in school. Um, so just to give you a little bit of context, Avid, which is an acronym for advancement by individual determination, um, in White Plains, uh, really works in two ways. One is there is an elective class, um, both an Avid elective and an Excel elective that supports a group of students. Each elective section has about twenty-five students. We have sections starting in sixth grade and going all the way through twelfth grade. Um, and those students meet every day. It's an additional class. They learn lots of organizational academic studying skills and strategies that help them to be successful. Um, they are selected because they're interviewed. They meet a set of criteria. They are students who are considered academically in the middle. So, you know, we talk a lot about what we do for students who need lots and lots of remediation and extra support and opportunities for students who are already flying really high. Um, but sometimes we don't always think about what's happening to students in the middle. So, um, that's what this, this program looks to do. There, we also look at other considerations such as the student might be the first in his or her family to attend college. Um, and Avid is going to support them to access our most rigorous courses, be successful, and prepare them so that they have lots of choices, um, after high school, whether that's a college or career pursuit. Um, the other component of Avid is the professional development that's provided. So the students, uh, the teachers who are trained in the summer institute and teach the elective, and one of them will talk tonight a little bit about how that's informed her teaching. Um, but teachers who have nothing to do with the elective courses attend the summer institute, which Avid runs. It's a, it's a really fantastic professional development event in the summer. Um, there are regional trainings. And then also teachers who have been trained in average strategies, some of them are generalizable. So they're really academic language, organizations, studying. But then there are also content-specific courses. So what does writing look like in math or science? Um, uh, what's culturally relevant teaching look like in my classroom? Uh, and they share those strategies, skills, the things that they've learned with their peers in our schools. Um, and you can see here that the program began in twenty-ten at Eastview. At that time, it was a six-through-eight middle school. That was before the redesign. Um, and in twenty-seventeen, so two years ago, we had our first graduating class. So the Avid cohort that started in twenty-ten at Eastview, they graduated. So we've had twenty-seventeen, the class of twenty-seventeen, and the class of twenty-eighteen, we've had graduating seniors. Um, you can take a look there at the, the demographic breakdown of the students who are in the Avid and the Avid Excel electives compared to the demographic breakdown of all of our six-twelve students. Um, and then you can also see that we've pointed out, um, the percentage of students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, who are represented in our Avid classes, um, compared to the, the general school population.
So Doug, just to clear about that. So for example, fifty-eight percent of all our students are Hispanic, but in Avid, eighty-five percent of the students are Hispanic. Okay.
And, and it does shift a little bit from year to year. Um, so to, to take a look at what this investment has done specifically for our two graduating classes. So what, what's happened with this investment that we've, we've given to these students? Um, specifically the last two graduating classes. So, um, we really wanted to take a look at some of the factors we think, uh, are meaningful for students having, being in a really good place to be successful in college. So if you, if you take a look there, um, we wanted to take a look at the factors of, are they taking some of our most advanced courses? So for example, do they sit for at least one AP exam? Um, do they graduate high school, um, with a Regents diploma with advanced designation? How many credits have they accrued? So you need twenty-two credits to graduate high school. Um, but I know that the high school has, has set a bar of looking to, for twenty-six or more so that they're pursuing additional coursework. And then what's the graduation rate in general? So again, you can take a look at, uh, you know, the Avid students, we feel confident. And there certainly are other initiatives and other factors in their success. Um, but, but we know, and you know, we've heard from them, that the support of the Avid elective or the Excel elective have helped them to, to be as successful as possible. We also pull out a little bit in the upper right-hand corner, looking at what happens after they graduate. Um, and again, we, you know, we broke it down by, uh, how, what percentage of our students are attending two-year colleges or four-year colleges after graduation. Um, you know, we were really pleased to see the success with which our, our Avid students are achieving. Um, and I, I have to go back and find out about the applying for and being accepted into four-year colleges for all White Plains students. But, uh, the last two graduating classes, every single Avid student applied to and was accepted to at least one four-year college.
Doug, have you disaggregated this data for Avid and Avid Excel as well?
This is, so, so the way it works is that we, we don't have a group of, um, Excel, former Excel students who've been seniors yet.
Okay.
Um, they're currently in tenth grade, our first group of Avid Excel students.
So at some point, I guess, to look at it in different ways and...
Yes. And, and just a little reference for, for everyone. Avid Excel, um, is, is a course that looks to support, um, students for whom English is a second language, um, to help them, uh, shift. And it, there's really a lot of work around academic language. Um, so that they, by the time they get to high school, they can join the Avid elective class. Um, and then, you know, lastly, just, just one statistic. Uh, and that's that seventy-four percent of our six-through-twelve staff have participated in some form of Avid professional development. So for some, that means they've attended the summer institute. For others, that means they've attended a regional, uh, training. Um, I was happy to learn recently that actually BOSI's will now be partnering with Avid. So those, some of those, uh, services will be local and more affordable. Um, but some of these also refer to in-house, in-house training. So, um, you know, conference day sessions, uh, faculty meeting sessions in which some of these strategies, uh, you know, have been shared. Um, and some of the images here I wanted to share with you because if you walk through our schools, you will see, um, lots of the, the... schools, you will see lots of the, the strategies being implemented in classrooms by teachers and by students, and there's no Avid sticker. They're really just best practices. So everything from, if you see those strongly agree, agree, disagree signs, you know, in the, in the four corners of a classroom, that's something most likely that one of our staff members learned from, from an Avid peer or, or a staff development, and that's a part of their classroom every single day. You see an academic word wall. You see costus up in the upper left-hand corner there. Costus levels of questions for challenging students to consider higher-order questions whether they're posing them or responding to them. So I'd really like to ask the most important people in the room up. So we have a couple of students who are, are Avid students who, who were nice enough to join us this evening, and actually, they, they really asked to join us to talk a little bit about what the, the program has meant to them. So Samantha?
So Avid stands for Advancement via Individual Determination, and it's a program that prepares students for college readiness, and we do this every Tuesday and Thursday with mini tutorial groups. So we have a few tutors come in and students are separated based on their subject that they're having problems with. And peers ask them questions, like to get them towards their answer. So yeah, it's a really good strategy to lead students to the right path and good grades. So.
Honestly, I find myself using Avid strategies in most of my classes. I think that not only I, but many of my peers that are non-Avid students use strategies as well, and most of the time, they won't even realize that. But Avid is definitely one of the many ways we can do our work and be successful in high school and college, and throughout middle school. Personally, Avid helped me go through middle school successfully by academically preparing myself to high school as well.
And one of our Avid elective teachers, Melissa Starr, also wanted to share a few words about how the, the program has informed her teaching.
Hi, I teach, oh, almost talked too loud. I teach seventh grade science in Highlands, and I've been an Avid elective teacher for, this is my fourth year, so I'm on my third cohort, because we loop with our kids, so we stay for two years with them. So I currently have the Avid seven group, and I'll stay with them next year as well. Regardless of being an Avid elective teacher, the strategies I learned in the very first training that I was sent to that I did not want to go to in Eastview, and I'll never forget, I gave Meg a very hard time about that, and the Avid instructor, really changed just the way I am as a teacher in general. So even if I wasn't an elective teacher, I think I, I still would have bought into all of the things I used. So whether I'm doing it in science or I'm doing it Avid, I use it all the time. It really is best practices and just, you know, I love the Avid elective, I love the chance to be able to really have conversations. These kids have so many questions about college and life and careers, and it really gives us an opportunity to have that. I know Catherine Barrera is one of our Excel teachers, and it's the same experience. We talk about it all the time, like the kids just come to us with these questions that they wouldn't normally maybe ask. And we, we're able to, sometimes we have to step away from what we're doing and like have a real conversation, but it's, it's really meaningful and I love it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
At graduation last year, so there were, you know, kids coming by us, the high school graduate with the Avid pin, so Rosemary and I did sort of an unofficial poll as we were shaking hands very quickly saying, "Hedjla," it was positive.
We also noticed how many kids had National Honor Society cords as well as the Avid pins. And that was very impressive.
I, I think something that's great about that is whether it's the pins or the, or the cords at the high school, you know, we really want to teach kids to advocate for themselves. So I didn't go, you know, or one of the teachers didn't go to the principals and say, "Can, can the kids wear the cords or have the pins?" We said, "You go, you speak to them." And I think that that's, you know, testament to their maturity.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
It's always great when our students come and, and speak, and I really want to commend you both. And one of you, we spoke to briefly, I don't, I don't know your name, the young man, he came, he came early. He wanted to, you know, he was really early, so we had a whole discussion about that. And of course, you were here early too, but he was like the first person sitting here, and I was so impressed with that. So thank you both, both of you, for being so articulate and presenting. We do appreciate the opportunity to be in your educational lives. Thank you.
Great talking.
I try. Okay, so we, we're ready to move on to some reaction items. May I have a, a motion for Action Summary Items four through eight?
Thank you very much. I'd like to take a moment to recognize and, and thank and offer our appreciation for the following donations. A thousand dollars from the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools for a Latin American dance performance at Eastview School. More than a hundred new books from Jeremy Abramson at the Premier Collection for all of the schools. Seven hundred dollars from Lauren Norton, Nanette Kress, and Joanne Schmidt for the Nature's Classroom trip at Post Road. Three thousand dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Roy Haberman for Highlands Middle School. A total of eight thousand sixteen dollars and one cent from various donors for the following scholarship funds. The Jewish War Veterans White Plains Post 191, Acts of Love and Kindness Award, Audrey Rogers Memorial, Liz Fink Hildago Memorial, Dorothy Ann Peters Memorial, Jean Dubovik Memorial, Louis and Rose Missero Memorial, Dorothy H. Thomas Memorial, the Brown Family Memorial, and the Guy Matthews Memorial. And a hundred dollars from the White Plains Beautification Foundation for Highlands Middle School as well. Thank you very much to all of our generous donors.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll be moving to our individual action items. May I have a motion to approve and ratify the terms of the memorandum of agreement and authorize the superintendent of schools to execute a collective bargaining agreement effective July first, two thousand nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, may I have a motion to accept the resignation of Tasha Brown, principal of Ridgeway Elementary School, effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen? May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I do, why, now can, or wait?
Okay.
Okay, because I have a couple of things. The first thing I want to do is, is welcome and recognize Ms. Lillian Rusulo, one of our newest teachers was, is here this evening. Hi, Lillian, how are you? Welcome, congratulations. I also want to thank the Board of Education, the administration, and our administrat-, our colleagues on the administrative negotiation teams, and congratulate them on the new memorandum of agreement. And finally, it's with a heavy heart that, that certainly we accept the resignation of, of our colleague, Ms. Tasha Brown. We wish her all the best. We know that she's going to continue to do great things for children, and we certainly are very much appreciative for the years that she served the children in the White Plains Public Schools. So I know, I, I, I know all the board members feel the same way. And so thank you very much, Tasha, and good luck and best wishes.
Thank you. Thank you. So, next? Next, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approves and authorizes the Board President and the Superintendent of Schools to execute a certain settlement agreement and general release, release with employee seventy-three fifty-two?
So moved.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our last individual summary action, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve Mr. Siegel's dispute resolution fees and charges, including a cancellation policy dated April thirteenth? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, can we have our committee reports, if there are any? None? Okay. Oh, you had finance.
Just a little instruction-
Yes.
To review some of the dual-language meetings that have taken place related to the review and assessment. Talked about some of the changes and tweaks to envision Math 2.0 2020. Talked a little about math specialist positions, Earth Science for All and Avid, which we heard tonight. A little about summer curriculum work, just lots of different things. What else? High School Technology Committee and looking at learning management systems and schoolagie at the high school. And I think that was mostly the agenda.
The Audit Committee met just before this meeting, and we discussed an internal audit and about with the focus this year on food service, which has not been done in quite some time.
Cool.
Which is why I'm really-
Exactly.
Next, and I hope I'm right, with Special Ed, we did have a presentation on our special education programs and our rationales for how we place students and what we want to do moving forward, and just the importance of all of us being very collaborative and, and speaking up on anything that we feel needs to be changed or addressed. Thank you. Also, we have a coffee chat on Thursday, here, not today. Okay.
About today's Monday.
Yeah, because today is Monday. Yeah. Okay, before I move to adjourn, thank you, Carlos and John, as usual, for all you do. May I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.[1767.73]